This time, I'll call our special meeting together. I would like to remind everyone that Commissioner Legg is in Kentucky. He is on a hunting trip. This is his annual vacation. And he did want to make sure that people understood why his seat was vacant tonight. And this is our subdivision ordinance that we're looking at tonight. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor, fellow commissioners. As stated, this is our third work session with our proposed subdivision ordinance. And as usual, I'll start with a revisitation of where we are. And then I'll take you through the current proposal. And I'll leave you with what I think are next steps. In terms of where we now, our last work session was conducted on the nineteenth of October. And we focused on mainly commercial landscaping requirements, residential landscaping requirements, and our town of Hope Mills plant list, which we have added crepe myrtles. We're still fine tuning it. But the caveat we have is the reference to the North Carolina list. So we can really massage it specifically for Hope Mills. But we do have a clawback of general, um, general plant list that City of Fairbills and other municipalities reference. But Lamarcus and I are really fine tuning one for the town of Hope Mills. But the last time we had our work session, Mayor pointed out that, you know, our tree really is a crepe myrtle. So we may provide some varieties of crepe myrtles. But I just wanted you guys to know, we did have to add it. Now, the first thing I want to let you guys know, typically, all the conversations that we've had so far, those are regulations that have, that are enforced in our zoning ordinance. Even though we're talking about landscaping requirements for commercial, residential, that's actually enforced in governing our zoning ordinance. So even though this is a subdivision workshop, we hadn't really gotten into the subdivision ordinance yet, even though the things we're talking about are affected for development and things of that nature. But, and we did talk about, um, one plant for, uh, one tree per residential lot. But we hadn't gotten into the specific sections of the subdivision ordinance. If you recall at our last, um, session, I said that I wanted to start going through and cross referencing things. Because when we're dealing with plan review and we're dealing with these subdivisions and this development, there are cracks or holes, or loopholes that allow certain things to take place. Now, we have checks and balances that are always in place that'll stop these things from happening, and one of which is a very serious one that you'll see. But we, we've always felt that if we could make an amendment to the ordinance to highlight certain sections of compliance that bring in public works, that bring in stormwater and things of that nature into my ordinance and vice versa, then if there's a subdivision I'm doing, when it's time for those streets to be constructed, they have to tie into the Standards and Specs Manual because we're referencing it now. Right now, that language doesn't exist. So that's what I'm getting ready to get into today. So the first section of subdivision ordinance, um, basically talks about, um, cross sections. It's, it's in the street cross-section section. And the actual, I gave you guys an updated copy. So right now, this is in section eighty-six A dash three oh three G. The existing language currently reads, "Typical cross-sections of proposed streets shall be drawn to scale showing width and proposed construction of roadways." Now, that sounds pretty detailed. Get in the room with the developer and watch him work. And so what we're doing to change that is to say, "Typical cross-sections of proposed streets shall be drawn to scale showing the width and proposed construction of roadways in compliance with the Town of Hope Mills Standards and Specifications Manual." You're gonna hear that language throughout. I don't have to, and Don and I have talked as well, I don't have to list a section of the Standards and Specs Manual. But when this subdivision was done, the Standards and Specs Manual didn't exist.
Right.
Now, many of the things in the Standards and Specs Manual mirror NCDOT standards. But you'll have a developer come in here and swear, "Our ordinances, the regulations are different from DOT." No, they're not. They're exactly the same. So you have these legal challenges when the language doesn't explicitly outline a reference to a specific set of standards. That's what we're doing here. And it's all throughout the subdivision ordinance where, like I said, we have checks and balances in play, but this does help us a great deal because the minute they see that section, I'm sending them straight to Don. The next section talks about our MIA. The municipal influence area, the existing language, this is in eighty-six dash four oh two A. The existing language reads, "Municipal influence area, all developed, all development located in the Hope Mills MIA, approved and established by the County Board of Commissioners, shall be developed in accordance with subdivision design standards officially adopted by the Town of, of Board of Commissioners and as stipulated in the county subdivision ordinance, except as provided for in any interlocal agreement jointly adopted by the Town and the County Board of Commissioners." This is crucial because this language existed in the subdivision ordinance. But if you recall, we did an amendment to our MIA in the last two years where, um, there was some pushback with the county, but we created a ten-year MIA area and a twenty-year MIA area where our subdivision ordinance references an MIA map. It needs to be updated. So what I'm doing now in subdivision ordinance is cleaning up a lot of stuff, is cross referencing things, and, and the, so the proposed lang, the proposed change is not to change this language, but to update our subdivision ordinance with the current MIA map. This is the current one. The, the blue areas are what is considered the existing town limits. The green area is your ten-year MIA area. And it's technically orange, you can't really see it, distinguish it here, but that's your twenty-year MIA. Now, the difference between your ten-year and your twenty-year, your ten-year MIA area is the area mostly contiguous to the town that has the highest, um, potential for development in the near future. The twenty-year, you'll see, appears to be kind of some of the outskirts areas or the areas that have existing development where you might not see a turnover on that pretty quickly. But the key is to make sure with all these annexations we have coming, we need to make sure we have the most latest updated MIA map in our subdivision ordinance. So that's just more of a housecleaning item. Next, you have a cross-reference tied to the general criteria. This is section eighty-six dash four oh four A. Existing language, um, reads, "All subdivision lots shall, but a street designed as either public or private, and all public or private streets shall be built to the standards of this ordinance or where applicable, the standards of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, uh, NCDOT. Public streets shall be designed in accordance with the standards of the town and shall be constructed in such a manner to be eligible for acceptance to the town's street system. Private streets shall be developed in accordance with the terms of this ordinance and other applicable federal, state, and local regulations." Sounds very detailed, has no reference to the Standards and Specs. So what we're talking about doing is just adding that language into it, not supplanting that language, but just adding to that language by adding, "All public or private streets shall be built to the Town of Hope Mills Standards and Specification Manual." This next section is section eighty-six dash four one B one, "Public Streets and Construction." Again, every section I see something needs to be cross-referenced. Existing language says, "All proposed public streets shall be constructed according to the standards and specification of this ordinance or other town codes, and in no case shall be constructed to the standards and specifications less than that of NCDOT." Now, that's kind of saying what the Standards and Specification Manual is, but it doesn't explicitly state what that manual is. So the language that'll be added will be similar to the previous page. "All public or, um, private streets shall be built to the Town of Hope Mills Standards and Specifications Manual." Now, this is the heavy one. I'm gonna read it in its entirety for the record because this is tied to when subdivisions are trying to go to another phase, but they haven't submitted for, uh, street acceptance. All public streets, now, this is, I'm gonna read to you what the, actually, this is existing, but this is the proposed language. I didn't want to actually type both of them up. So I'm gonna read to you what the proposed is. That's the type of where it says existing. The proposed language will state, "All public streets shall be certified by the Town of Hope Mills Public Works Department as being acceptable for future maintenance by the town. And developers shall ensure that proposed public streets are constructed to compliance with the Town of Hope Mills Standards and Specifications Manual and eligible for acceptance and maintenance by the town. Until such time that the town accepts the public street for maintenance, the developer and subsequent purchasers shall be responsible for maintenance and for securing final acceptance by the town. It shall be the responsibility of the developer to formally notify the Town of Hope Mills Public Works Department and initiate the process of transferring the responsibility of street maintenance. If application," this is key, "to the Town Public Works Department has not been formally submitted by the time the, um, inspect, the building, Town Building Inspector has issued permits for seventy-five percent of the lots shown on the planted portion of development, the Town of Hope Mills Planning and Economic Development Director shall not issue any additional zoning permits for residential construction until the Street Department formally notifies the Building Inspector of the town receipt of such application." Now, that's the proposed. The existing doesn't mention the Public Works Department, does not mention the Planning and Economic Development Department, it does not mention the Standards and Specs Manual. Now, that said, we call this the seventy-five percent rule. That rule is in place, and it is intended to basically say that if we have a subdivision, like Georgetown Estates, it's, it's already approved for three hundred and fifty lots. There, they might be on phase three right now. So as they get ready to go to phase four, they'll plat another, uh, group of lots. Well, if they don't have, I don't have a resolution from Don approved by you guys for those three phases or that previous phase or existing phase that has been accepted by you guys onto the power bill and accepted as streets in the town, when they get to seventy-five percent completion of that phase, I can halt all residential construction. But where is the reference to the standards? Because what happens is these subdivisions could be approved in the county, and by the time Don is doing street acceptance, we don't have the road diets. We don't have the sub-based information that says that the roads are being built to town standards. Now, this references the town standards and requires it to be built up front. It's not strengthening the seventy-five percent rule, it's cross-referencing the regulations to make sure there is no question, because they'll tell you, "We didn't know." Now, we're dealing with a, a developer who's calling the town because we're holding residential construction. They're not telling you guys that, um, and we know there's a street in the town we all know about. This is how this stuff happens. So what we're doing is strengthening some language we already have that says, "I have ten permits on my desk. When I hear from Don, they'll be approved. Until then, I don't have to touch them." And, and so to me, what these developers have to understand is, if we don't do this, when that subdivision is finished, they're calling us, the neighborhood is calling the town with the issues that exist when these streets are cracking within two years, and it's supposed to have a five to ten-year shelf life, the developer's gone at that point. But now, it's the responsibility of the town. And this is intended, this is a perfect example because I'm cross-referencing my department, I'm cross-referencing the inspection department, and I'm cross-referencing public works and the Standards and Specification Manual in one change. In an area, we already had a seventy-five percent rule, but we didn't have anything that referenced the standards. So this is what I'm trying to do with this particular section. And lastly, you'll see two areas scratched out. As staff continues to identify areas to tie into the subdivision ordinance, there are two remaining areas that we would like to explore, which we've talked about before. Staff has contacted Casey Cook, the land conservation biologist for NC Wildlife Resources Commission, to gauge their interest in a possible joint work session with planning and stormwater to assist the town in adopting aspects of the Green Growth Toolkit. The overall premise of the Toolkit is to identify natural resources and wildlife habitat areas, to identify areas where wildlife habitat and other valuable natural resources can be conserved as communities continue to grow. So I scratched through Standards and Specs because we just handled the majority of what I feel is the, the key areas with that. The fire code dependencies with, that's another conversation. But I left the stormwater in the Green Growth Toolkit box in red. Casey just emailed me back about twenty minutes ago, we're trying to set up a meeting later this week. So she, Beth and I will probably powwow a couple of times, and we're hoping that the next work session, we would do jointly, um, to provide you with some, and, and just to let you know, this is primarily tied to wildlife habitat preservation and conservation. We may not have larger areas in our town, but we do have, uh, birdlife, um, habitats and things of that nature. So it's meant to help us identify some of these areas that could be preserved. But the one thing I talked to Beth about that I'm really interested in is, there are ways we can treat, and I explained this before, we can address stormwater treatment in subdivisions through natural resources and through planting that cut down on these detention ponds and things of that nature. They are experts in that. Um, Mayor Melissa, myself, and Lamarcus went to the training. It's pretty amazing stuff. Some of it may not apply here, but they're gonna help us identify the areas that it will apply. And they have a whole section of the, the Toolkit for ordinance amendments and incentives. So they have the things they can put in the, or they can help us put in our subdivision ordinance where if we're trying to get a developer to do a conservation subdivision by clustering lots in one area and leaving an area undeveloped, their incentive that can be put in that work for everyone. We need the area conserved, maybe increases a little bit of density for that developer, maybe lot size and things of that nature, but they can help us accomplish that.
I received an email from her, in fact, I got it today, I believe, in reference to how we--
They're, they're doing a, a magazine article, and they want us to, uh, provide some quotes. And so, right after that, she emailed me, "Chance, I haven't forgot, I haven't forgot. What's your time next?" Early, um, later this week. So she's very, she's really, really, really cool. Uh, she'll come down here and she'll talk with us. But those are the two areas that I think we could really do something else with, and I wanted to see if you guys are interested in doing a joint session. Now, another thing I want to leave out, this is not necessarily related to subdivisions, but while I have everybody, I would love for us to possibly explore overlay districts. It's something that I really, really love to do. It's something I've talked to the county about. And it's something I think we could really do here. A lot of times when we had this contentious conversation about the, the signs, for instance, when people are talking about standards in materials and colors, it's very easy to accomplish that with overlay districts. Overlay districts allow you not to necessarily exclude certain things, but you can start shaping the town in the direction that the Southwest Land Use Plan already calls for. So if we know that Hamburger Alley is where Camden and Main is, we want that to stay that way, but what can we do to make sure that you don't get a tire shop and some stuff you don't want to see done, but the things that will come, what can we do to create some uniformity there? But what can we do in Trade Street? It's a historic district, but what can we do to say, "You have to build this type of form, you have to build..." New urbanism is where you can come into play. You can require buildings to be put close to the street, sidewalks, um, at street frontage, outdoor dining, and parking in the rear. It creates and fosters more of a pedestrian, um, environment, which is what we're trying to do anyway. But I would lo, while we're doing this, I would love to be able to start exploring, um, a couple--
I have, I have another question that was brought to my attention, and that was with our Standards and Specs--
Yes.
--for our streets. And I, and I read this, and then I realized that, that, and it's not anything we can correct now, but according to this is when, when the developer, when the, the plans are drawn, the streets are put in, they cannot use the lot size part of it as the right of way. In other words, if this is my yard, you can't say that, you know--
You can't absorb some--
This is my yard, but then all of a sudden, when, like with the signs, the town comes back and says, "Your, the, the signs are in the right of way." Well, if it had been done correctly by the developer, that right of way would not be--
I think what you're saying is that there are requirements that require them to set aside a certain right of way for DOT.
And what they're, and what they're not doing is, they're, they're setting it aside, but they're setting aside in the actual, they're getting more, more lots because what they're doing is, is not making the roadway--
The, the, the right of way of the road is absorbed on the lot--
Yes.
--not on the roadway.
And then the same thing happens with rezoning. My understanding is with rezoning, when you have a residential lot that is converted to commercial, when the, the site plans are submitted, then they go ahead and include in those site plans the, um--
They're not exclude, yeah.
--right of ways, so that actually the, the person that is getting the rezoning, and I might be wrong on this, this is just information that was brought to my attention, that then when the rezoning takes place, they're actually giving up part of their land to the right of way. So in other words--
And it's not eminent domain from DOT. It's the developer almost like a snatch and grab.
So that's another question I ask, is, is that something that, that people drawing the site plans are just well aware of?
It's, it sounds more like an enforcement issue, because I know we have general plat requirements in here that dedicate, that, that speak to that, but I think the, the disconnect is on the back end where we may need to be a little bit more vigilant and enforce.
Well, and without using the name of the people, uh, the example that was given to me was when a road was, and this was a DOT road, but the land that was, that was used belonged to somebody that, that divided their property up. So when their property was divided up, then you purchased your land, you, you've got an acre, acre and a half of land. But then when they come through to pave that, that road, what happens is, you're expecting, they're gonna have to purchase your, your land, and what happens is, it's already taken care of because when it was drawn, it was drawn that, that twenty feet or having many feet. And that's where that, they're saying that with their sign, it all came about with the sign ordinance, uh--
But I think what happens is that you think you have land--
The locations of signs, right of ways. So that's why I don't really understand the specs and specifications, but I thought, if it's not clear, that you don't really find out until you're the actual, um, new property owner, that maybe there's something in here that we need to have--
I can look into that.
Because the only thing I could find was, it says, "The area of any lot shall not be included within the right of way." But I don't understand, and I, I guess the, the people that would be looking at this would not understand that either. So that's, that's just something that brought, was brought to my attention while we were looking at this. And did you, Commissioner Malley, did you, could anyone else have a question or anything that came to mind?
No, I just, it really, I'm really excited about the overlay part.
Yeah.
I, I think that's an opportunity.
And, and it, it can go as big or as small as you want.
Did we not apply, did we not get a historical overlay?
We have an overlay in the historic district.
Historical district, yeah.
But I'll give you an example of what, you know, historic's completely different, but, in Atlanta, they took the entire city of Atlanta and broke it up into twenty-six overlays. They called SPI, Special Public Interest District. So, district, so you study each area and you put specific development controls and regulations in it, and it's not meant to stifle development. It's meant to enhance development. That's where you get your incentives. I gave an example one time before, if you have an area downtown Atlanta and you're retrofitting and you're building a thirty-story skyscraper, well, the first two floors of that building from ground level up have to be active uses. It's called finstration. It has to have seventy-five percent finstration. So if you have a whole block, you don't have just a wall, you have active uses, uh, banks, dry cleaners, restaurants. But the parking has to not only be hidden, it has to be wrapped inside the building. So if you see those urban areas where it looks like in the middle of the block, you're driving under the building, that's the parking deck, but you don't see it because the entire bi, parking deck is wrapped with units. But if you're doing that, you get a density bump in units. So it's not something we're just giving developers more units. We're getting hidden parking, we're getting active uses at the street, you're getting rooftop gardens. It's incentivizing it, but that's what you have the ability to do in overlay where it's not gonna be town-wide. The regulations we put in the Trade Street overlay will be different than the Camden Road overlay. It'll be different from the Lake overlay. So you actually look at these specific areas and you fine tune them. What you're trying to do on Ellison Street is completely different than what you try to do at Millstone. So you have the ability to put regulations in that only affect that one area. That's where we can really get into carving out a look and a feel for the Town of Hope Mills. And I've already talked to the, I mean, the county and I have been talking about it for about six months, to be honest with you. I just felt that I wanted to go ahead and introduce it to see if you guys are interested in it, but that's something that they're actually, um, when I talked to the county, you know, they said they had wanted to do it, they didn't want to step on our toes. And they didn't think that, they didn't realize that we were just as much interested, um, in it as well. So, um, what I can do, like I said, parallel to this, we can start having, um, work sessions that actually start talking about, I don't think we need to bring in a consultant or anything like that, but we can start gauging the, the general public because I think we definitely have to get, have them involved because if we're talking about going in areas and changing the standards, I think I want to get some input from the public to see how they feel about these things. But I think that's something I'd like to explore.
I agree. It's an effective management tool.
It is.
Clearly.
But, uh, any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay.
All right. Next session, um, like I said, I keep you guys posted. I want the next one to be about Green Growth Toolkit. I might start sending you guys some information on overlays and any other direction that you guys have. I think you might have had a question.
Yeah, I, I, um, was mentioning, I know we mentioned in the last workshop about the parks in the neighborhoods, which originally I thought it was a really good idea, and I still do, but I was just concerned about the negatives and the positives, worrying about different people utilizing those parks in those neighborhoods that don't live there. It could possibly cause more issues with crime, police activity, et cetera, et cetera. Because really, you're not, I don't, you're not gonna be able to manage who goes in and out of these parks in these neighborhoods. So something that originally sounds good can end up being more issues in the long term, you know? So I, I just don't know. I know we, it, it does sound good, but I don't know the positives versus the negatives.
Well, um, I was telling Dr. McCray, um, that there's a statute that Dan has helped me, uh, kind of comb through where the state mandates that if you have a municipality that has a parks and rec plan with parks, there's the payment and lieu piece that I don't like, where it says that if you're doing a subdivision of a certain size, you have to put a park in it, and if you don't, you just pay a fee to a parks and rec. And the developers are just paying the fees and moving forward. I don't like that, so I wanted to take that out. But there's this caveat in the state law that states that if you have a mandated park system in a municipality, you can't require neighborhoods within a certain new subdivision within a certain distance of that municipal park to put a park in. I think that's because they want to encourage these new neighborhoods to utilize the town parks. So that kind of created a hiccup, and what she's saying is true as well. We don't technically have that problem here in Hope Mills because I think the only park we have in the neighborhood is Harren Park, and that's ours. We don't have new subdivisions that have been putting in parks because everybody's been paying the fees. But if we were to go in that direction, that would be something we'd have to find some kind of way to address.
And I think the question too came up was that if it becomes a town park, then it is accessible to all town--
Yes.
--people, so that no matter if it's in a neighborhood. And that was the concern with the park that we have that, uh, on Lexington Drive that has, does have issues, that continues to have issues, that, um, that is a neighborhood park, but it wasn't, it was a donation to the town. It wasn't part of, I think, the actual development. But I know that, that, that one would be an example of a park that has, has had issues.
It's a slippery slope because if I live in an area, I may think that park belongs to me and my neighborhood.
Well, it, it does belong to the neighborhood, but it has not been maintained. If, like, if there's a park within, uh, like, say, for instance, the parks are required in some of the, um, income-based housing, they require a park, but that park is close to also the, who manages that park. So in other words, it's typically condominiums, apartments, or whatever, they maintain it. But if it's a park within a neighborhood and there's no homeowners association--
It's the general public, yeah.
--then it's the town's responsibility. And that, I think that's the, that's the thing, is if there's a homeowners association, then it could be part of that arrangement if it's a community park.
If it's a community park and it's tied into the homeowners association--
Yeah.
--that's really that neighborhood.
That might be a loophole that would help us as if the, if they did--
Now, they would have to make sure they understand that the maintenance and upkeep of that park is on the HOA. Preserve Lake Uptrench is a perfect example, that's a private lake. If you don't live over there, you can't, well, it's not a lake now, but, you know, but if you don't live there, you can't access that. But they actually are paying for the dam to get fixed. They are taking care of those expenses because that lake is privately owned. So you have different things, but she, she brought out a very valid point that if we're gonna go in this direction, we need to be mindful of how this could possibly--
Probably have to have something within the ordinance specifying what you--
Yeah.
In other words, not just saying you provide this, these are the house and why you would provide it.
Right, and I really would have a problem, you know how some-- Right. And I really would have a problem. You know how some HOAs are really making sure that those parks are maintained? And then, we, you know, we was talking about the point that we do, we are putting all this money into our parks and recs and having all of these parks here. And, and I understand the quality. It increases the quality of living and quality of life. And then we got this golf course that we don't know what we're gonna do with yet, but it has really nice green space. A lot of people use it. So I feel like we're investing and putting so much money into our parks and recs right now already. Do we really wanna go there? Like originally, it does sound like a good plan, if it can be maintained, if it doesn't become a problem with crime.
Now, this is where it gets, I'm gonna throw, uh, uh, throw, throw something back at you. This is where it gets interesting. Ninety percent of all our new subdivisions in MIA way on the outskirts. So we're not dealing with new subdivisions. We're talking about seventy-five lot subdivisions, hundred and fifty lot subdivisions, way out by Lake Upchurch. So we have to figure something out because that's not a subdivision like Golf Acres, this right down the street. That's a distance away, so it's outside of that state mandated area, but that issue is very real. Um, these are not, these are pretty expensive neighborhoods. And so where is the balance? What can we do to maybe create some um, quality of life um, um, activities on the outskirts where a lot of our growth is happening, um, while we're cultivating our internal park system as well? Where's, what's the middle ground that we can create? So I'll explore some language and see what we can find out.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? No? Well, I guess we're through with our workshop for today. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you for your information. And we'll
Uh, y'all wanna go ahead and set a, a date for next one? With these, let, let me, let me gauge you guys because um, Beth and Casey with National, uh, with the Green Growth and I, we do have to kinda pow-wow to um, put some stuff together.
So it might be January.
Let's do it January. That's what I was thinking.
Probably January.
Let's go with January.
Yeah, January should be fine. Yeah, it should be fine. Yeah.
Well, we don't know because aren't we gonna do it with Casey?
That's my point. But regardless, if y'all meet in January, that still gives us the time to work through some stuff internally before we bring it back. Yeah. Yeah. I'll check with her, cause she wants to meet with us later this week. So I'll check with her and I'll let her know that we're looking for something in January. Okay, I can do that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, this meeting will be adjourned until our regular meeting starting at seven P M.